Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the March 28th meeting of Franklin Municipal Planning Commission. Thanks for everybody for being here. We will start our meeting with the minutes from our February meeting. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second and any discussion? Seeing none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the time in the meeting when items that are not on tonight's agenda, you have the floor to come speak to the planning commission. Any comments you've got, again, for items that are not on tonight's agenda? If you want to, please come forward and we'll recognize you. If not, then we'll move on. All right, Catherine, any announcements?
No, sir. There are no announcements at this meeting.
All right. It's not going to be the same without some announcements, but we'll move on.
I'll work for next time.
All right. Are there any items, again, I'm speaking to the audience as well as the commission and the staff, any items that are not on tonight's agenda that you want to present to the commission to review? Okay, I see none for that. We are making good progress. All right, we have consent agenda tonight for items that are considered non-controversial, and I'm going to read right now the list of those that are on tonight's consent. Items seven through nine, with nine being a deferral to the June 27th meeting. Items 12 and 13 both being proposed to defer to April 25th meeting. Items 17 through 26 are on consent. Again, the audience, commissioners, staff, anybody want to pull items from tonight's consent agenda? Okay, I see none, then I will take a motion.
Move for approval with staff's recommendations.
Second.
Okay, first, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And that will move us to item number 10. Amend, let's see, ordinance 2013-12 to be entitled to ordinance to rezone .96 acres from low residential RI District to residential variety RX District for the property located at 711 Hillsborough Road. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, you may remember this as a request earlier on to rezone to an R3 District in order to put one additional house on a piece of property at this location at 711 Hillsborough Road. At this point in time, they have come back with a request to rezone to RX. What this project basically does is allow for one additional property on this site. If you look at the layout of the site, the site is, almost looks like it's a vacant lot that should have a house on it. The staff is very comfortable with recommending approval for this particular property.
All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience other than the applicant that would like to speak to this item? All right, is there someone representing the applicant?
That would be me, Daniel Woods, with the Addison Group. We are in agreement with staff's conditions of approval and are here to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Well, that's the first all-commission motion.
God bless all of you.
I'm not sure we have to vote after that.
Happy Easter.
All right, if you have a motion, let's get a second. So I can clearly hear a second. Give me a second. All right, move to second and discussion. Ms. Peterson.
It's whenever we were looking at this before, I thought there was a density associated, written down, associated with this. But whenever I was looking back at this, I didn't see it in either part.
I don't have it in front of me, but I want to say since it's two units at .96 acres, it comes to a density of something like two units per acre. So I'm running there.
Well, but it's two point.
Two point.
I was thinking 05, but I could be wrong. But anyway, I'd just like to have that entered into the record whenever that.
Yes.
It's been on this.
It is on the plans.
Been on this before somewhere, but I couldn't find it this time.
Yes, it should be on there somewhere. If not, I can make sure it's there on the revised step.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Happy Easter. Thank you, guys.
Item number 11. Resolution 2013-16 to be titled a resolution approving a development plan for 711 Hillsborough Road, PUD subdivision located at 711 Hillsborough Road by the city of Franklin.
Staff recommends approval. I always forget it's in two packages. Staff recommends approval.
All right. It's very wordy tonight. Anybody in the audience wants to speak to this item? I see none, then I will open the floor for the applicant.
Nothing else to say.
And who are you again?
Thank you, Mike, Daniel Woods.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Move to second and any discussion? All right, seeing none in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, item number 14. Ordinance 2013-15 to be entitled to ordinance to rezone 80.88 acres to height overlay District HTO for the property located in the southeast quadrant of East McEwen Drive and South Carruthers Parkway. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is requesting deferral to April 25th. The reason for our request for deferral has to do with a traffic impact. The applicant is asking for a height overlay that would allow up to 12 stories. We believe that that may have an impact on the site and the surrounding sites in terms of traffic, but we don't know that now. We don't have the information available to us, so we're asking that this item be deferred. And I would ask that Dan elaborate more on that issue.
Sure. Good evening. The primary concern here is that we have just completed a six-figure traffic study in the corridor, which was just endorsed unanimously by BOMA this past Tuesday evening. They endorsed the hybrid option for the McEwen-Carruthers Integrated Growth Plan, which we presented at a joint workshop just a couple of weeks back for everybody. We need to make sure now that, you know, we have this plan that's been completed and put in place, that as these different kinds of rezonings and height overlay requests and things like that come through, that folks, you know, prepare a package for us to validate those assumptions that were made in those plans, make sure that we have the opportunity to look at what they're putting in and what they're planning for when they have requests like this, so that we can make sure that our planning documents are in concurrence with development as it proceeds along. So we did not get any data with the submittal and requesting the deferral until we get that and have a chance to evaluate it.
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone in the audience other than applicant want to speak to this item? I see none, then is there someone representing the applicant?
Yeah, Brian Nichols with Dickinson Wright, representing the applicant. And Mr. Brian Reams, Highwoods Properties, will also be joining me a little bit later. We appreciate the fact that staff has favorably recommended the actual height overlay itself. And we want to say that we're also in full agreement with staff's comments about transitions as we go to a site plan, and we start transitioning toward the eastern edge of the property, considering the height impact there as well. So we're in full agreement with the staff report on that. We disagree only with the need at this time to defer the item and to provide a traffic study. And actually, the reason we do that is because of what you just heard staff talk about in part. I want to say that we are respectfully disagreeing because we certainly understand staff's concern with a potential increase in density as a result of a height overlay that's possible. But we also want to provide some background that will let you understand that the height overlay has nothing to do with the density planned by the developer on the site, by the applicant. As you know, there's no set density on this property yet. It's not, it's basically if you comply, you can do the density that you, complies with the other development standards. And in fact, in preparing for the Carruthers Corridor Development Study, the city canvassed these developments and used a figure provided by the applicant of 1.4 million square feet of office space. And if you look at the Kembley-Horn Study, that's what's in the chart. The, that projection, it will be unaffected by the height overlay. The applicant is not seeking the height overlay in order to achieve a greater density. And Mr. Reams will talk a little bit about why that is that they are requesting this. In addition to that, because the city has done this study at the projected levels that we continue to have for this development, and which are provided by the applicant and requested this, and with an assumption that we would be going for the height overlay, that traffic study has essentially already been done. Now, more detailed traffic studies will be necessary. I don't want to minimize that. We moved the site plan, certainly all of those opportunities will be present for a more sophisticated, more detailed traffic study. But one of the problems the applicant has is that in order to get their site plan finalized and do that submission, they need to know whether they've got a height overlay or not. And so that's why this is all coming in the sequence that it is. So we want to go ahead, see whether we get an approval on the height overlay, and then develop a site plan and come in with all those detailed studies that make sense. We're not suggesting that either you or the board of mayor and all are going to work without a traffic study. We're saying that you already got very good numbers, a very intense study that is better than most because it's much broader in scope than a particular site traffic study would be, and that that is a good starting point before you get to more detailed studies. As I mentioned, you might have a question as to why the height overlay doesn't impact the density. And for that, Mr. Brian Reams of Highwoods Properties, I'm asking him to come and just talk to you about kind of how they developed that square footage number and what the real purpose of the height overlay within this development would be.
Brian?
Thanks. I just want to reiterate what Brian said. This is, the height overlay request is not at all related to density. And we've been very consistent with all our communication with the city, with staff, that we're after a 1.3 to 1.4 million square foot office density max. That's what the request will be ultimately. But the height overlay allows us to court corporate headquarters and tenants that you really have no way of planning for in the absence of that demand. So much like we've developed over the last 15 years, Cool Springs Boulevard and Carruthers up and down, we always had the height overlay. We've only used it up to eight stories on one building, and it just, it happened that that was not a corporate headquarters. We initially proposed Healthways at 10 stories and 255,000 feet. It ended up being 255, but they wanted the five-story H. So we just want to be prepared and for the next corporate headquarters-type location, and the height overlay will give us that flexibility. Have no intention whatsoever of increasing density beyond our initial request. And then what Brian was referring to about how we go into purchasing a property, we've got to achieve a certain amount of density in order to make numbers work. So we bought the property on the basis of that density and, again, have no intent to increase it. I'd be happy to answer any questions related to that.
All right. Let's have a motion, and then in second, then we have some discussion.
Motion to defer for staff request.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded to defer. Any discussion?
I guess the question would be, once this is rezoned to the height overlay, it might be that you, you know, even though you're definitely planning to develop this yourself, but it would really, it could be so to someone else who might have a different plan for it.
Right.
And so I think that that's, I think they were looking for a more detailed traffic because it would hit you a little bit closer, I guess.
But if we do a traffic study, it's going to assume these numbers. So while you're correct, a traffic study now is going to be based on these numbers. So it's not going to show you the most potential one could ever do. It's going to be based on exactly what we're using. So that's, that's why it's, we could do it. It's not really going to show you much.
Yeah, one thing I probably should have mentioned, what happens today if you're operating under the current height limitation is you're going to see buildings, smaller buildings spread out and eating up green space and losing that flexibility to really create fewer buildings and a smaller footprint and preserving the green space. So it's, you know, it's a planning tool, but the reality is that's our intent going in. I mean, it's already a 140-acre site of which, you know, probably 60% is going to be developed. There's a ton of green space already, and that's the intent of this whole development with the other uses is to, is to have an urban mixed-use, you know, more vertical type of a development.
And do I see that a lot of this in this tract, too, would not be able to be built upon?
A large portion of it is unbuildable, yes, ma'am.
That's right. So it would have, it's going to have a lot of green space in it.
Right. That's right. That's one of the attractive aspects of it.
Can I ask a question? Is it just a one-month deferral we're asking for?
Yes, sir.
Any reason that would be requested again after that?
I don't believe so. I mean, within a month, that would give us time to meet with the applicant and go over a few things and get just this very conceptual validation of the traffic study assumptions completed. I think one month's more than adequate to get it addressed.
All right, anything else, Scott? Did you want to?
No.
Dan, let me ask you a question. The numbers that they talked about, I know there's a lot of analysis that created the road structure that was proposed the other night. Were the numbers that they're proposing density-wise consistent with what the road network was created for, or is that too much detail that you wouldn't have known in order to, I'm not sure I'm asking the right question or how to ask it correctly, but...
As far as the specific assumptions that we put into our study...
To create the results that we saw.
The 1.4 million number that was mentioned is consistent. I can't remember the exact table number right off the top of my head.
Okay, sure.
But there were several other assumptions as well. There was a certain number of apartment units, and there's a retail number and a couple of other things in there. What we're looking for is for them, you know, with that submittal, you know, we have a contextual planning study in place, you know. We're looking for them to provide us, you know, just that information, you know. This is, you know, yes, this is what we talked about back in the fall. The study is now complete. We're planning to comply with that. Here's some additional trip generation based off of that. We're going to compare our trip generation to what's in the study to make sure those distributions and stuff are still, still seem to make sense. We understand that this is, this is a rezoning, so they're very much at the front end of things. So we're not looking for them to have, you know, a number of turn lanes identified, but we are looking for them to provide us that data and say, yes, we are still sticking with the assumptions that were initially assumed, and this is how many trips we believe are going to generate off of it, so we can validate it and move forward, you know, with some basis of reasoning.
In terms of land use, would you say that this is a reasonable consideration for, because I'm thinking about the other intersection of Cool Springs and Carruthers, it's got the height overlay, and you've got the hotel and such. In the land use plan, was that, is that a reasonable consideration for what we would expect to see at this intersection as well?
As far as the densities that they're talking about?
And the height overlays and all that?
Yes, I believe so.
Is there any reason why it would hurt you if we allowed them to keep going with the, since it's so early in the stage, many more?
The concern that I have is that when you go through a process and put a planning document in place like that we have, there are a lot of assumptions and a lot of work that go into that as far as what that mix is going to be. And as they step through the process, I think it's very important that we as staff work with those applicants as they move through at each step of the way, that we get information that validates it and says that, yeah, we're still on the same page. Yes, we're still on the same page. Because, you know, it's possible that, you know, they, you know, this next month, we work through this, and they come back and validate everything, and we recommend approval for it. They may get to the, you know, whether they go the preliminary plat route or if they go a development plan route, something may change. You know, they, something may happen in the economy. I don't know. They may get an opportunity to do something different. They may want to do more density, you know, something may change. So we need to be prepared as we step through the process at each one of those submittals as we work through to be able to address that and adapt to it as they go through our, through our process.
All right, any other discussion? The motion is to defer to the April meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
We have one no, but motion passes. All right, item number 15. Ordinance 2013-16, well, you mentioned that to me earlier, Micah. So if...
This one goes ahead.
This one, okay, I'm sorry. That's a different one. And final ordinance to rezone 57.23 acres from AG to residential variety RX for the property located south of South Carruthers Road, north of the Harpeth River, and along the proposed South Carruthers Parkway.
Mr. Chairman, staff is again asking for deferral until at least April 25th regarding this project because of lack of information on sewer and water availability, primarily sewer availability. We are completing our basin plans, and we will know more when we have those basin plans, but at this present time, this site is not served. And we don't know when it is served, what that effect is going to be upon the site. I would ask our engineer to, Dan Allen, to elaborate on that as well.
Yeah. Was everybody able to get a chance to read the write-up in the staff report? Put a fair amount of detail in there.
Yes, he did.
A little bit more than we usually do.
Yes.
Okay. The issue with this is that as the applicant was starting to meet with us preliminarily, we realized that we had, we had a coordination issue with two basin plans. Further out to the east is the Maze Creek Basin, and then this project actually resides in the Goose Creek Basin. Maze Creek Basin showed a much larger interceptor coming in, and then it stopped, and at the point where it's supposed to connect, when then it, when it then goes into the Goose Creek Basin, the size of those lines dropped dramatically. We went from a 36-inch down to 12 and 18s. And so we knew immediately that there, there was an issue there. We've been working diligently to try and get that corrected because, you know, all of these types of things need to be vetted based on our basin plan. So we have to get the basin plan right for the area and then, you know, work with developers so that they can plan around that and put the proper things in place. And that's really where we're at on this, is that the basin plan is not at a point where we're comfortable as staff saying that it's ready to go forward. There have been several options that have been discussed. I believe the applicant's going to present a few things and talk about a couple of possibilities. But at the end of the night, David Parker, Mark Hilty, Paul Holson, and myself are not in a position yet to say that we are comfortable and ready to approve any particular option yet. We just haven't had enough time. We're working with our consultants as diligently as possible, but the plan's just not ready yet.
Got you. Okay. Excuse me. Anyone in the audience other than the applicant would like to speak to this? All right, seeing none, is there someone representing the applicant?
Good evening. I'm Chris Pascheraala with Pearl Street Partners. I'm joined here by our land planner, John Haas with the Edge Group, and our engineer, Michael Ray with Fisher &amp; Arnold. We technically, can I make my presentation?
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Well, this proposal is for the helm property. It is approximately 57 acres. We are requesting entitlements for 169 residential units. The site flanks South Carruthers Parkway as it's planned and about to be constructed. The recommendation for deferral, as Dan mentioned, was because of the status of the basin studies. And I guess we respectfully disagree with staff, and I want to say this as well, is that we've worked very hard with staff, and staff has worked in close coordination with us, and we appreciate the effective communication that's happened. We are actually in agreement with all staff recommendations for approval, including condition number three, which states that we will continue to work with staff and with engineering, the engineering department to meet the requirement for adequate sewer infrastructure. That's a commitment that we've agreed to and that we will continue to. As Dan mentioned, we have developed a couple of options for the city. One other thing also that he mentioned is that this sewer basin study and the sewer line itself is to accommodate mainly basins to our east. Currently, our site does sewer. I don't mean to disagree with Ms. Powers, but the site would actually sewer today up to an existing 24-inch line that traverses east to west and goes under the interstate. We have a sewer capacity availability letter from the city. In terms of water availability, Mel Crofton has indicated that once the 16-inch line is designed and put in place, there will be water availability for that, and we will get that, and we're in the process of getting that and writing for the city. So in terms of actual capacities, those are in place. It's a matter of, on the water side, getting the pipe in place, but again, today, the sewer is there. What we're trying to do is work closely with the city and with staff to accommodate this additional basin to our east and the interceptor. We've, in an effort to, to create as many options that are viable and logical as possible, we've created a couple that, that we've shared with staff and talked with them about that seem to have a lot of merit. And these are things that we can accommodate without any significant redraw of our plan whatsoever. But in the event that, you know, the one thing I want to mention is that we are at the front end of the process. They are making great progress on their efforts with, with the basin studies, but we're two months away from final approval of this plan, and we just feel like we would request a recommendation for approval from this body to allow us to continue to move forward, working closely with staff, working closely with the engineering department. It's a rezoning as well as a development plan approval, so there'll be three readings in front of BOMA. And, you know, as we've always done, we're committed to work closely with the staff and with the elected body to make sure that we're creating something that's consistent with the land use plan and consistent with the city's goals. So with that said, I don't, have I missed anything, gentlemen?
John Haas with Edge. The one thing that Chris touched on that I want to be very clear about, and even if we have to go back to staff, I would do that to confirm, that there is service to this property, that this is about accommodating an issue in another basin, allowing it to flow through our site in some way. We've allowed for contingencies for that to flow through based on the conversations with staff up to this point, where there have been multiple conversations. Unfortunately, the timing doesn't fit. However, we believe that we can accommodate any of those contingencies with the options that we've put forth. I think as Chris said, and as we've talked about, is if in fact there is some unforeseen option that impacts our plan, that we know if, per the ordinance, if it impacts our, the development plan, per the ordinance in such a way that it's a new plan, that we would come back to this body. If it's a matter of because sewer could possibly end up impacting our site and we lose a couple of lots, but it doesn't impact our roadway network and some other things, then we could move forward. But we're willing to take that risk in order to keep the project moving forward, and we're confident that we've provided a contingency for all of these options.
We're available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
I move to defer based on the possibility that these studies of the basins would put in a situation where the city of Franklin is obligated on some facility that we have not even approved funding for. And that, I'm sorry, that it, that this might be a part, because of the basin study, which is what we're asking for, they're asking for a deferral on. The basin study will also include a facility that the city has not even voted to provide funding for.
A second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing none in favor of the motion to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no, motion passes. All right, is there a motion for? Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Item 16 cannot, cannot be heard because we deferred item 15. They run together, so...
Well, but you'll still need to actually act to defer it since it's a separate...
The same for deferral. Second.
Move for deferral in second. Is there a, any discussion? All right, seeing none in all, favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thanks, Micah. You told me all about that, and I get brain dead sometimes up here. All right, anything else? Any other items? Okay, then is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.